I think we should. I'll put it on the list for next year. Easy.
Morning, everyone, and welcome to the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners meeting of January eighth, two thousand and twenty five. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Happy New Year, Ray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy New Year. It's like how we passed it in two thousand and twenty four.
Oh, yeah. You make sure I get that right here. Okay, so first order of business is attendance, and we have our three commissioners. Starting with Commissioner Coyle.
Good afternoon.
Newly signed in Commissioner Tom Tomorello. And myself, acting as chair, which I'm glad to. Our first order of business is to assign officer appointments for this board, since this is our the first meeting of our board. And I'm going to start off by nominating Commissioner Coyle to be Chair, myself to be Vice Chair, and Commissioner Tom Barella to be Clerk.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is any discussion on this motion and selection of officers? Seeing none, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Barella?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
May I just take?
Commissioner Coyle?
I'll take it.
It's your turn. You want to recess?
No, I do want to say thank you, guys. Thank you for that nomination. I I know that there are other footfalls forces at play, but I appreciate your courage and, you know, the idea that we have historically done it as a rotation, but also like your your confidence in me and this in the way we're going to work together. So thank you for that. I I recognize that because of external forces, those some of these decisions are not always easy. Thank you.
After two years of serving with you, I see only good aspects of what's going on here. You're you're you always act in the best interest of the county, and that's what we're about. This is not a partisan operation. We're running a business, and I'm sure this will serve the county well.
Thank you.
And I'll just say the same thing. Steve made a comment about father, he's doing it. He's done a great job. I've watched her and watched him and watched her. Very smart, very well-run meeting, very professional, and I think she'll lead Steve and I in a good direction as the Chair. Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
The last time we had to say that, you know, the late Kate Pratt was a was a commissioner, and that was the last time I had to say Madam Chair. So congratulations. Well deserved.
Thank you. I think there's one thing. It's like I we don't follow Robert's rules. I feel like we will work together. I don't think that we need to be called upon unless there's, you know, that this is an effort where we'll collaborate. Speak up when you want to speak up. I'm not going to be. I do need it. I think it's like it works better when we just have discussions and collaborate, and we're not we do not follow Robert's rules.
No, we do not. Officially, we do not.
Okay. So now, in taking over, we're going to move to number two, and I try not to make motions. It's it's a dream to me to make motions, but we'll start with department offices and liaisons in a discussion. I think the best way is to just maybe everybody start and talk about what liaison or department offices you want to be liaison to. So Steve.
Well, I'll I'll start. I'm interested in a county attorney, the delegation, sheriff's office, and Registry of Deeds.
Okay.
I would like I talked last week to Commissioner Coyle about softening a little bit of workload on and asked if I could move in and take the Department of Corrections. So I'd like that. I've had Jude for ten years, and now I'm back on my love of you with Jude. She's easy, simple, and a rock star. So I'll take her right back with me and get that new building open pretty soon. And I'm going to also request to have UN Resources with Allison. And I'm not sure about UNH Cooperative Extension. I'm in that building. My wife kind of told me that they got stuff to do with horses and all that. So I said to my wife, well, then we'll put your name on it. So if nobody wants Cooperative Extension, you know, I I know it's not something that you have to attend all the time, but especially if you go over there once in a while, see those folks. So and I'll be in the building over there. So you guys are okay. I'd like to take a cooperative extension.
And that do you want to also take Joint Law Safety Committee because that's connected to?
Yeah.
So I'll do in cert. I think we're all in agreement. I'll take long-term care, finance. I don't mind being on the Educational Assistance Review Committee. And then I guess I would either want, you know, I can take the delegation. Which I'm glad you do have because that puts you at four and me at two relatively. I can either take the different, you know, usually two, three, three and three.
You'd like to do the delegation. That's fine. I may.
I sure I'll take the delegation. Okay.
You want me to make a motion on on the position as well?
I think it just probably motion as outlined as discussed.
I think we'll make a motion as outlined in item two on the agenda.
Second.
Okay. I'll put some paper.
All right, liaisons then.
Next, we have union negotiations to be scheduled. I think this is just purely informational, but I do think in conjunction with how we delineated liaisons, it works out well for union negotiation. Okay. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add on that?
No, I think that we're good.
Which ones are really coming up? Allison, you know.
Yes, you have the deputy sheriffs, dispatchers, DOC supervisors, and the nursing home.
So what it it appears to me that we will each have a union negotiation this year in the spring, which is kind of nice. It distributes work well and anybody else?
I I end up with three. Let's sell the sheriff.
You end up with two, deputy sheriffs and dispatchers.
Supervisors is under Tom. Commissioner Tom Morello. But the sheriff supervisors are in twenty six.
Oh, the next year?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
So the ones we have for.
It's a fair distribution of duties.
So now we're moving on to organizational protocols and procedure review. The first discussion topic is when are we gonna are we going to maintain our meetings on eight thirty on Thursday? Anybody?
I'm good with that, although I there's a piece of me that would like to meet in the Hilton during the periods of time that we have to wear masks. So we could do that as we're going. I don't know how you guys feel about that, because if a member of the public would like to join us, it's quite difficult to come into this conference room in the middle of the nursing home, and the Hilton is kind of officially a separate entity. Chantel, you have anything to add as far as use in the Hilton that way?
So the only piece on our side we would have to make sure is we have to not me specifically, but Sam and his team have to set up the Hilton. So the masks change all the time. So we would just be trying to figure out what the setup would look like and what kind of the expectation for the week would be because it does add that extra piece to my opinion.
Yeah, we could work.
How fancy we're looking for a setup.
You'd have to use what we use for the delegation because it's different.
I was yeah, from that piece. Do you think that maybe the solution is because I think if we do have members of the public may, I mean, it's rare for us to have members of the public, right? So maybe we could try to put a note on the agenda that if members of the public wish to attend to notify us to like reach out to Leila or to reach out to the office so that if we know someone's coming, then we could put it in the Hilton on that particular day rather than extending over order when there's a mask mandate, given how limited are. I don't know.
I just don't like wearing a mask.
Yeah.
Like everybody else. I'm sure everybody else in the room likes it, right?
Mechanics of the the mechanics of the owl and the recording and the Zoom are more challenged and the acoustics are more challenging.
All right, well.
I know.
We can stay here.
And I, you know, with the kind of changes in season, hopefully, it's going to start to slow if things warm up. If we always anticipate a spike around the holidays because people gather. They tend to see in the winter months a higher where once we start to come out of the winters, it tends to be less frequent.
Okay, so.
Knowing there's an asterisk on that because I don't actually control the sickness, but.
Well, I mean, post holidays is always like it's a but hopefully we can come out of this fairly quickly.
Okay, so we'll stay here. We'll stay here.
So are we set on eight thirty on Thursday? Does anyone?
Yeah. I'm used to that.
Great. Okay, meeting agenda submissions and supporting documents deadline. Mister Burke, do you want to read these for read them into the record? The agenda submissions. I think we have to, yeah.
Okay, agenda submissions, including all supporting documentation must be submitted. The commission is offered by two P M. On the preceding Monday or three days prior after meeting weekday exchange, unless otherwise specified, all meeting documents are distributed to the board for review by the end of the business on the deadline day. All agenda deadlines are noted on the previous week's posted agenda, which can be found on the county website under events.
Great. Does anybody have any comment?
No, that's the same policy that we've observed previously, and it works well.
Whether emergencies are located in the PPPs, chapter eight dash four, page twenty three. So for anyone who wants to see the policy regarding. I don't I think.
Put for the record.
Do we want it read for the record? I don't think we need to. I don't. Yeah.
No, there's going to be this much work.
We're already looking to resign from.
It's good for me to read when you get older.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to legal consultation procedure.
Departments are required to seek approval from the commissioner liaison before contacting legal counsel on any new matters to the extent possible. Additionally, the commission's office must be notified by email for billing reconciliation purposes.
I have a question on that. It says that the the departments are required to seek approval from their commissioner liaison. Does that mean that a commissioner liaison on their own without the other two commissioners and authorize the use of?
Counsel.
Counsel?
And I think then bring it forward following. You know, it used to happen, and I'm not not saying anything bad. It was too much going on. There was too many calls just to but we kind of limited, you know, and we didn't know about it. Then we get the bill of labor, we get the bill of whatever was the but now at least we know if they're calling.
Yeah.
I I haven't been asked for that. The only time that that there's been a request has been with the whole board that we're seeking to use counsel.
I think that you're lucky.
I didn't have sheriff corrections before, did I?
But I do think the idea that we then bring it back to the board, and so we have, and I think that's historically how it's been done. Usually, there's a nonpublic to get everyone apprised of what's happening.
Okay.
I see no difference.
Bye.
Okay, let I'm sorry, entering into agreements, contracts, I'm going to use addendum amendment and similar.
With that pursuant to RSA twenty eight colon one B, only the commissioners are authorized into agreements. All agreements undergo risk review and legal counsel is consulted for new or revised agreements. If the vendor rejects recommended recommended legal and or risk changes, the agreement is presented of a board of commissioners meeting for a final determination by the board. Upon completion of the reviews, incorporation of changes in public vote by the board or approval, the agreement is signed by the board of commissioners.
Okay. Sorry, Tom, you're going to want to read today. Electronic signatures.
The commission's electronic signatures are on file at the commission's office, only written. Consent is required for each instance for use. Examples of permissible uses include agenda items, letters, and cards. I believe, Leila, you have mine on record still.
Great.
Has a change.
And then approval of time offer requests and bi-weekly time sheets for personnel supervised by commissioners.
Chair responsible for approving submitted time off requests and bi-weekly time sheets for all staff recording directly to the board utilizing the timekeeping software system.
Great.
So on that, I just have a main question.
Yeah.
We haven't done that for a number years. It had ended, I think, back with, I think, Commissioner St. James, who did it for a while and stopped. And it was, I guess, informally kind of given to me on behalf of the commissioners to take care of the division records if the chair wants to take that back. So that's that's fine. I just want to say it's actually different. In reality, it's different than what happened.
Sure. I don't think we need that. I mean, I think I don't think I think the system's working just fine, and I think my experience is that through working with my liaisons that there's always good coordination about time off, and frankly.
Yeah, I know. Like Chuck, you sit your alarm clock perfect, twelve oh one, I get an email, you asking for time off in February. So you saw I was getting sworn in today, but I got something from you at twelve oh one this morning for you asking for time off in February. Am I right?
Yeah, I did actually.
Yeah, I did. Like, this is too early, yeah. So I think you.
I could talk to Ben about that.
Also, I think there to the extent that, I mean, we have confidence, and I I think more often than not, the department heads and direct O D Ds are like working on their vacation, their time off, so and are always accessible. So I think that this is like a like I don't see any reason to change anything. All right. So let's move on to the consent agenda.
A motion to approve December fifth, two thousand and twenty four nonpublic meeting minutes.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay. On that, I'm going to take a roll call because I don't know. Are you going to? Yeah. Do Commissioner Tom Morello?
I'll say.
Commissioner Godu?
In favor.
And I'm a yes. The Board of Commissioners, American Express Card. This is just for information.
Given the really down.
I don't think we, I mean. We have the nursing, the compliance work work plan for which is informational. That's next. Does anybody want to talk about the work plan? Compliance for you binders.
So essentially, last week, we talked about the closing of the two thousand and twenty four plan, and this is the plan that Kendra and Alene did the majority of it that we all came together and realigned the plan so that all of the topics were present. However, so they fell into the quarter that they were in our plan where last year it would say not applicable or not completed, and then we were adding it. So it's more aligned with the systems of the nursing plan or the nursing home's current plan from a timeframe standpoint, and breaks down being responsible and kind of our systems to ensure compliance throughout the year.
That's great. It's nice to see sort of the responsibility tasks and in there that is more in keeping with what we know who's doing the work. Does anybody have anything else?
Nope. I looked at it. It looked like it was well done.
Okay. Surplus equipment request.
I'm making motion approved surplus equipment request pursuant to RSA twenty eight colon eight dash A and declare two N O A V rise of beds for long-term care services as surplus with the items to be properly disposed of with certain parts removed for future use.
Second.
Any discussion? No. Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello? And I vote yes. The A P list.
I'll make motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, including the January ninth, two thousand and twenty five accounts payable. There's totally four million sixty six thousand four million sixty six hundred thousand seven hundred and twenty four dollars ninety five. Am I doing that right?
Yeah, it was just the four million sixty six thousand seventy twenty four dollars in that person, just to reiterate what you said already.
I almost got the glance.
Chuck, would you give us a like a very brief?
Can you second it first?
Oh, second, sorry.
Okay, and discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, so not about thirty percent is actually the normal monthly state bill. So that's about one point six million of the of the four million. We also had about five hundred thousand in contracted nursing, but that included like a backlog because notably with a career staff, one of the vendors, they had to go back and correct some of their invoices. So that's why there was a little bit more contracted nursing this time around. And then also, we had a fairly high month of significant medical claims from November. Again, please keep in mind that, you know, that's about seven hundred and fifty thousand. Some of that, no doubt, probably will be reversed partially through stock loss, but there's a lag time on that. So those are probably the, you know, the three biggest items, you know, as far as making up, you know, that four million dollars.
Okay.
Thank you, Chuck.
Welcome.
Anybody have anything else? Okay.
Nope.
Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I believe. All right, commissioners updates. Anybody? Commissioner, anybody have updates?
I'll just very briefly. Thank you to all of Rockingham County for giving me the opportunity to serve for another four years or for four years. And this is our first meeting of the new board, and I think that we're are a good session. Moving forward, the boards will work well together, and I'm thrilled to be here.
I would say the same. I'm thrilled to be here. You all know that by now. Glad to be back in this room. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm really working, looking forward to working with you guys. I think, you know, things are going to be really, you know, going forward, I anticipate this movement, you know, collaborative work together. So the next topic of discussion is the appointment for NHAC Executive Committee.
That's good.
Sure.
Obviously, you guys know it's true. A lot of interest in this. I'm the past president of the association that evolved for that, I think, the ten years that I was elected. I already got a call today from George McGlars trying to put me on the Biolog Committee, which is something that I don't want. And I got a call from Kate Horgan to like to put me on the Finance Committee. I said, well, there's a possibility I'm not even going to be there, but I'd like to go back to you guys know, or if you follow me, you know that I've supported NHAC and Naco and being the past president, probably way back kept that thing afloat. And we're really in a tough situation. So I'd like to be the guy to represent us if one of you has decided you wanted it.
We already have four others. We need five total. Is that right?
Right.
So I think that I I'd like Tom to represent the board up there.
I agree. I think he's got a lot of history with the Association of Counties and will act in the best interest of the whole county. So.
Thank you. I think a letter has to be drafted sent to.
Sure.
I think Kathy Station is the president.
Do we make a motion?
Yeah, I don't know that we, I mean, I think we, I don't know that we necessarily, do you think we need?
Yeah. Yeah, you need a motion. It's a point that those positions are appointed by the commissioners, and then a letter goes up so they.
Thanks.
Yeah, okay.
Want me to make a motion on the new slate?
Yeah, I'll make a, well. I don't, I think this slate, I don't think we have to make an a motion on the whole slate. I think it's just to make a motion on you. And so I'll make the motion since you're I move to appoint Commissioner Tom Barella to the Executive Committee on the Camper Association of Counties.
Second.
Okay, on that motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello?
I'm going for myself, yes.
Should I mark that as a? I'm taking care. And I vote yes. All right, next up is the Department of Corrections discussion about the comfort dog.
So comfort dog, it's all going very well, actually. We have tractor supply will be providing the food for us at no cost. We have actually a couple of veterinarians that are very interested in, so we have, and they're very interested in actually doing you know, no cost or low cost or anything the dog needs. My staff members will step up saying if we don't have money in our budget, that they'll pay for themselves, but don't anticipate much. I probably would look at taking out the insurance through the county on the dog that we have that's offered. I have a draft policy here, just in case if you're interested, because it goes into things like when the dog is retired, you know, the handler, it's an opportunity to buy a dog per dollar, and if they leave and those kinds of things, we married this awful lot of Portsmouth and also Salem will have comfort dogs already. So we've pretty much married a lot of what they have on there. Meatball, named a dog. Have his own always the American Bulldog. Looks like P D from Little Rascals dog. He already cleared the jail that doors and stuff don't bother him. Only thing he was interested in is how the inmates got on the top tier because he's never seen inmates up anywhere up that high. Very good dog. If you're not interested in the dog, dog won't come over to you. He senses that, and if you want to be interacting with him, he will interact with you. And a dog will be used for critical incidents on our end, not just for staff, but for inmates, any place on campus or in a community that any community might go up to that I authorize. The main handler, unfortunately, believes wasn't, he had to back out and take it home. So investigator Sherman will be main handler. The police will still be a secondary handler. I think David's the most secondary handler because we need a couple of that can be freed up, you know, if the nursing home needs something, we can just sense the people out with the dog. Staff is very, very excited. I just want to make sure that we have your blessing moving forward with all this. Or if you have more concerns or questions of me.
I I mean, I I'll lead off in that I'm familiar with the use of the comfort dog in Portsmouth, and it has been an unbelievable asset just from a, you know, it's anecdotal evidence, but nonetheless, evidence to the to the efficacy of having the comfort dog for critical incident for use in the community. I think that you know, it is just a a great tool, and especially in corrections where there is stress levels can be incredibly high, people are confined to the space that I think it's it's a wonderful addition. And as we talked about mental health and in both correct, you know, in law enforcement, that it's such a you know, this is an element that will aid in addressing mental health.
We put it there for victims too, the 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 dog. The handlers will be trained even if they're if the county attorney's office said, hey, the dog was one of our victims. There's a bunch of training that they have to go through with certifications, so they'll be able to like mother health training, first aid training for a dog. It's listed inside of there. So they'll expand and and we'll work it out with other departments how we can work with them. And if it's something that's appropriate that they want to do, we would be able to do that with the comfort dog.
And even maybe bring to some of the community, you know, maybe there's a point of expansion for like to bring over to the nursing home or to some community events where, I mean, I think what we've seen is that like there's so much great share in campus wide, and if, you know, the the comfort dog would be a nice tool at our and our overall costs. Low with, yeah, minimal.
Hey, Oregon Association of Counties already asked to be brought down to a meeting, so. And this, I also know that Tommy, like these things, we would be the first county to have a comfort dog.
I just want to know, the French Bulldog, how'd you come up with?
The American Bulldog.
Oh, I said first.
No, American Bulldog.
I don't know how many Americans, he's definitely one of a kind, American Bulldog named Meatball.
Yeah, he's one of a kind. Yeah, yes.
For years, I wanted the sheriff to name their dog Tom. Now we got Meatball. We'll get.
Meatball works well for the jail.
Well, I think. Does anyone else?
What do you think that we would see? The dog.
So what's happening now is Officer Sherman, excuse me, Investigator Sherman, will be starting once a week for eight weeks with training, one on one with the dogs. The Arrow Puck still has a dog, but if you all want to commission me, I can have them bring to a meeting sooner or later. If that's what you like, and maybe it'd be good if I bring the Arrow Puck people in and they talk about what they do and that kind of stuff because it'd be good. Right down the road.
Do you have your old pups come in? Remember, there was a money server that your the Department of Corrections did, and we were able to donate some money to Arrow Puck. And I think it's like, like maybe two years ago.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
So I think guys can grow beards.
It's like part of the Beards for Bucks thing. But yeah. But I do think if you could bring in Meatball, we'd all be through.
I'll make it happen.
I will forever call. I will forever call.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, turning it over, we have the Arthur Projects Analysis, Chuck, take it away.
So this basically showing that what was proposed in the previous meeting, board meeting, was put into action, and that all the monies were indeed. Um, obligated in the federal sense, that's all thirty-one, twenty-four, that's good news, so.
It's just great news, thank you, Chuck, I think looking at this, it's like, we um, we didn't have to give any but any money back to the federal or feds for all the offer funds, and that was like. Unbelievable accounting, I mean, just resourcefulness, it's fantastic.
No, it was great, we got the money, we gave it out just as appropriately, and we had no snag so far that we're aware of, 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 you know. Getting uh all of it, um, put, put in the right place, I think we're in great shape.
And from a, if you, a more global sense, I mean, we helped community, we've known, like, organizations and small businesses in the community. We've been able to uh significantly fund the building next door, which is, you know, a a building that's gonna last decades, and it's just. It's fantastic.
You know, we got retention to employees, I mean, the building, we took thirty million right out of it. I saw that on the cut sheet, took thirty million on your spreadsheet, went right across the street to the building, so. Way back, we talked about this, and I know all of us talked about maybe putting something next to the courthouse, and a smaller version. Unfortunately, COVID and Oppa came into our lives, and we got to do it, but we would have never got the support of the delegation or taxpayers to do what we're doing, so we used the money wisely.
Really great, and all the infrastructure projects that really are for water, for sewer, for uh HVAC, electrical, I mean, some like. Soul, I mean, these are rental, and that was different than, different program, but the, in the same vein of, certainly of uh. COVID relief money that we could really help people. Thank you, thank you, Chuck, it's like, this is your, your, another one of your children. Cared well for her, so thank you for that. Um, moving on to um. Human Resources, Allison, you have the Affordable Care Act update form discussion, do you wanna take it away?
Sure, yeah, the ten ninety-five form, the Paperwork Burden Reduction Act and the Employer Reporting Improvement Act were signed into law on December twenty-third. Employers are no longer required to furnish the ten ninety-five C forms to employees unless employees are asking for it, then we'll print it off. But we still have to file with the IRS, so we also, as part of that initiative, that new um law, we have to um send a notice out into to the employees, however. The federal government, of course, did not provide us with that, they're still working uh to look at what they would have, but they said we can make our best efforts and get something out to the employees, so we will. Get something out in the next couple of weeks to the employees to let them know that if they want a copy, they want us to print out the ten ninety-five. C form will do so, otherwise we won't be printing on the mass printing like we have in the past.
Do you, is there a certain irony, though, that it's like you have to submit, you have to some, give them forms to say they don't have to do the forms?
I know.
Like, isn't there a cost associated with disseminating the, the letter saying you don't have to do the form?
We're doing, yeah, I think what we'll do is, um, I think we're gonna try to put it on the um. The benefit tab or somewhere on the UKG platform, so it'll be out on the UKG platform, and then we'll do something to get it out onto the um athlete, like to post it on the website as well. Great, but thank you.
Well, it's nice to see, I mean, for doing a look at it.
Yes.
Okay. Um, moving, does anybody else?
No.
Okay, moving on to the accrual anniversary rate policy change and one-time adjustment.
We make a motion to approve a change of earned time. Uh, accrual anniversary rates increase policy to five per month at which the anniversary occurs. As recommended by the Senior Director of Finance and the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, the only thing, Allison, so I saw, there's two motions here, so if I look at that second page where it's, so if somebody starts on the sixteenth, they're gonna lose the, that month. In the right?
No.
That how that's gonna work?
So there's two motions, one is, so when the policy change, we had like an, like an overhaul, or the PPPs affected one one of twenty-three. So one of the things that changed was that if your hire date was, or anniversary date was between first and the fifteenth. You would get the, like, going from four, four plus years, you would get the, you know, the increase in the cool. Um, effective in that month that that your anniversary occurred, you know, if your hire date or or anniversary date was sixteenth and later. You didn't get that bump up in the cool till the next month, what happened was, the payroll system can't handle a half month. They can't handle a half month on your anniversary, so what happened was, how the system was set up, we didn't grant, there was a one-month delay for those who had the anniversary date. That was the twenty-first and fifteenth. Again, these, it's only for folks that had four plus or nine plus anniversary, it's, it's on everyone. Um, so what happened was, one motion is to be able to do one-time adjustments. To properly take care of those people to get them in accordance to the current policy. And then the second motion is to just simplify it, and that for anyone, regardless of if your, whatever your hire date was. That when in the month that you hit your four plus or your nine plus, you get that bump in the cool for that month.
Right, rather than the sixteenth being bumped to the next month, now the sixteen.
Yeah, and and again, the system can't handle, you can't put in forty-eight and a half months, and we can't put in, you know, a hundred eight point five months to handle nine plus years, we we can't.
We've crafted language, so we'll have to revise the policy with the new language, and we'll have to send a notification out to all the employees, we'll do it again on the UKG platform, but we'll post it everywhere as well. And I'll notify the union members, the union reps, this ten employees that are impacted by this. So any of those people in those unions, I'll send, I'll notify them that that's happening.
So it would catch itself in research.
It will now set it correctly.
Yeah, yeah, because it's either, you, again, we, the system can't be set for, and no system really could be set for a half month. So it's either, if you don't make this easier, then we're in, in general, we're gonna be looking now for those that are incorrectly getting the step up.
Right.
When they shouldn't, for those that have an anniversary date that are sixteenth and later, it's like.
It's a lot of work for fourteen days.
Extra manual work.
But, and the, I think the, you know, it's only a, to make it right or to, to fix it, the problem, it's like ten individuals. So like, from a cost perspective, to remedy this is pretty well.
And it's not an immediate cost either, you you're talking about, you know, it's it's a one-time thing, and it's only effective really on a payout or separation. It's not necessarily when they utilize it, because it's utilized for time off.
Correct. So, um, any other discussion?
No.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Barel, I vote yes.
Thank you. Motion number two, to approve a one-time adjustment of all current employees' earned time. Accrual balances that were not increased in the proper month due to system error. Nor to comply with current policy as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance and the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Um, any discussion? I think we just talked about Commissioner Tom Barel.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, courthouse closure, emergency dismissal pay.
The motion to approve emergency dismissal pay for January second, two thousand and twenty-five. Those emergency deeds in court, county attorney employees that were unable to perform work. Either at the courthouse remotely after two thirty PM, through the power outage, as recommended by the Senior Director of the Human Resources.
Second.
Any discussion? No, uh, just, here's to the new building. Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Barel, I vote yes. Hey, the repurpose, recreate, and revise job description for the Department of Corrections.
I'll make a motion now, to approve a repurpose, regrade, and revise job description, one senior officer administered to one. Business service manager effective February ninth, two thousand and twenty-five pending approval of the executive committee. As recommended by the superintendent and the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
One discussion?
Yeah, um, this is all one position, we're changing one position to another more encompassing position, is that what?
Yes.
Would you, would you mind reviewing what we're um discussing here?
So a few months back, Lisa came to me and said that his uh senior office administrator. Might be leaving um employment due to uh retirement, and he put me on notice, and he said that he was going to hold off on filling that position. Um, and just reestablish some of those duties and what that might look like if he needed to fill it. He'd taken that time to do that, and then he came forward a few weeks back to me and said that the notice had been given to him about this position. And that, um, he, instead of filling this position. Uh, he would like to shift some of these and also add in, add in responsibilities to this position. With the community corrections going across the street and potential ICE contract coming down the line for his organization, his department. And doing so, that will change some of the duties and responsibilities of the essential functions of that job. Also will impact a lot more in the accounting and the fiscal end of things on that job. And additionally, that senior office administrator position, um, we will just keep it as an open position. But in the budget cycle, he may be thinking of re, of repurposing that position to an accounting position due to all of the stuff with ICE and the community corrections. I will let Jason talk further on this, if you don't mind.
So repurposing that position to, I, we'd be looking at a um accountant, uh, entry-level accountant. Um, because we have, we can use it now anyways with the lava things we have going on. Um, so shifting things around, giving other responsibilities and duties, and keeping the same FTEs in that department. As I put in this position, a certain set, the one individual should just be directly to me, so now it's a department there. And this, there's no position still important, but they have that person as a department. Entry-level accountant is a lot less than they're paying, so if you're looking at for net savings, you're looking at about twenty-five thousand dollars, even with um. The increase of pay of somebody and then shifting this around to, in my budget, looking about twenty-five thousand dollars with the savings. By shifting things around and um reassigning duties and responsibilities.
Okay, so, are we talking about the financial aspects of this, is this part of this discussion, because there's no reference in this motion about. Uh, cost, and I know that I saw something that was on that, I don't have a copy, but.
Yeah, you can just, just. If you just scroll.
So this position will be regraded uh to a different position.
So it's really being a regrade and retitle is, but we're not repurposing it, because that position is gonna remain open. So that they can then repurpose that position if they need to.
Yeah, yeah, the executive assistant position remains.
The form has repurposed, marked appropriately, so it's just a regrade title.
The way I see it, I think, is like, in conjunction with retirement, it's an opportunity to, um, you know, reassess what's best for the organization, or, you know, the department going forward. Particularly in the context of initiatives with ICE and some of, and then, then new building, so, um, you know.
There's gonna be a lot.
Yeah. So it's important, and given that you're the second largest um budget in the county, that sort of that aspect of having that. Financial, you know, accounting side of it is kind of import, is important, and it seems like, because the. New building and the timing of uh should, you know, retirements and such, this is an opportunity, a good opportunity to reassess the roles.
And I've been playing this for me, I talked to Allison before, and my uh major banfield, like, this is the direction I wanted to go to, when then, that position, whether a person has that position, retire, going to retire, because. In my eyes, it need to be shifted around and um adding campuses in that department for better operation.
So in conjunction, that role that's being repurposed as part of, there are some of those tasks that were existing, I assume, are going to be shipped, downshifted?
There will be a few, yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure that it's appropriate for us to be talking about the, the uh, the value, the dollar impact uh in public session, and I would like to have a.
Table it?
A good discussion, maybe in non-public about the salary.
I agree.
Aspect, and uh, this, is this urgent, can we table this till next week and not interrupt your operation?
No, it needs to go for the delegation coming up, it needs to be sent over to them.
I had a couple of things on this, like, earlier this morning, so, I guess, why are we not filling it till June thirtieth? Why are we anticipating that it'll be unfilled through June thirtieth, the two thousand?
That is the position that the person retired from, that position not being filled till June thirtieth. Because, and it might be sooner, but we, but again, we want to look at how this is gonna.
The only other thing, it might be a non-public, probably, I gotta ask this question, non-public, but I'll just paraphrase what I'm looking for. Number four, the last sentence, I guess. I'm concerned or questioning what number four, the last sentence is.
Commissioner Tom Barel, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, or, but to Commissioner Godu's point, maybe the remedy here is we table this motion here. We address some of the non-public issues, and then when we come out of non-public, we could make them, we could bring forward the motion, if you're okay with that?
I would agree.
Okay.
And I don't have, I just don't know enough, so I had, just wondered, or.
So.
Motion's table.
Okay, are we all in favor?
I'm there.
All right, so that, that would take care of that aspect, and um. Will, I, in conjunction, um, there's a a further exception request, and I move to uh table that at this time as well. A related exception.
Right.
Um, so, I'm, I'm in a commercial favor. Um, all those in favor? Okay, so now we're up to long-term care services, a general leave um request.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve a general leave request for long-term care services employee G W. For the three, three hundred thirteen, two thousand twenty-five, through February tenth, two thousand twenty-five, recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services and the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Now, is there a discussion on that motion?
I think we know what this is about.
Yeah. Okay, um, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Barel?
Yes.
My vote, yes. All right, we're moving on to long-term care ser- services, nurses salary line, budget review. Um, so, uh, Chantel, do you wanna take?
Yeah, so, um, the report looks a little different than how you've historically seen it, so if you, when you're looking at it, if I can just caution to look at the top of the page, there's the payroll budget nursing, which is the entirety, I think, the report, how you're used to seeing it. However, one of the items that I've been looking at and working closely on with my team of HR has been around agency reduction in the agency spend. So, um, all of the credit truly goes to Lane and then Ben and Finance, they have spent a lot of time checking these numbers to be as accurate as possible, knowing that agency bills at the close of the month, and then we scrub, etc. But the second page that says agency only, um, if I have them, having them break it down now, to have the same exact lines, to know how much of the line is actually agency spend. Where we have worked very closely across the county with HR, with different kind of individuals to um hire in our own staff, and in our agency production, I wanted to be able to track in time, since we've made some of those movements. To see how much of our spending and budget is through the agency related, to be able to look at that percentage and um kind of have that ballpark. The weeks for the agency spends won't line up necessarily to that exact week, because it depends on how it's billed in those pieces, and it's more like paid versus. Utilized, but it gives a good ballpark of how much our agency spend is. Uh, for our total budget, though, we are coming in under the fifty percent mark for total spend, and, um. I don't know if it was shared or not, I know it was emailed over. Uh, Lane did a comparison, I guess, prior long-term care reported in June of two thousand and twenty-four, the breakdown of agency versus house staff. And she did a comparison to our current staff, and it has flipped favorite ways, you know, there's more house staff.
Unbelievable.
So, yeah, this is very exciting, um.
This is a huge turnaround, and when you look at the, I mean, from a, how, our savings, we're at over uh. Six hundred thousand dollars in overall savings off the, um, off our, you know, budget. It's like, we're gonna be kicking that, we, I mean, we all know what the disaster last year was, and we're, it's like, that's, we're on track for a five million dollar flip of the coin. Five million dollars, I mean. I mean. When we talk about, just a bigger mature, I mean, when we talked about using fund balance, all the concerns about using fund balance. And how much we're giving back in budgeting. And when you see that we're like, seriously, having a five million dollar swing for last year. When costs are going up, it is absolutely incredible. And Chantel, your team has. And, and not just your team, because it's kind of to Ben and Finance in terms of tracking it and also flipping the switch on. Getting more staff.
No, no, that's exactly right. We're doing fantastic and we're gonna correct the problem that we had from last year. We put a plan in place to hire more personnel. It's worked. And we're benefiting from it and it's the way it ought to be, doing a good job.
We have another orientation coming up next week and it's again, I think, the last handful of orientations. It's been more health staff than agency week over week.
And let everybody know that we still have positions open, your healthcare and interest in the work. Come over here with some jobs for you.
Yeah, we'd be remiss if we didn't shout out HR too, because they're, you know, the team in H, no, I seriously, I mean. Like, this is, we're not, it is, but this is real, real money. This is real, real money for the county and for the tax.
You know, truly to that, I mean, I know I came in like a fracking ball and so many. But there were so many things that I really truly threw at HR from different perspectives, different pieces. And autumn and the HR team truly, they ran with it. Even when I was like, bear with me, there's a little, a little out there. They ran with it and a lot of it I truly think goes to that switch that did not come from my side of the house and was completely autumn. Around that Indeed Quick Apply, because we have been reaching people and getting, and it has impacted positively for our health keeping. Or even outside of our nursing department, we've seen a high candidate flow and I know you mentioned last week a similar thing. So that.
I think the Indeed Quick was transformative, was simply transformative across the county.
When I watched last week's meeting and I saw that you guys already met your goal of seventeen, I'm like, but you didn't set the bar higher.
No, but.
Keep it going, it's great.
But that seventeen was set as the tipping point in terms of like being, that number was where, that was the influx point. And so now this is like beyond this is just savings off the stipend.
We have two full-time LMA's next on the thirteenth and two weeks later, we have two full-time LMA's.
I can't wait to see that AICL recruiting report.
Then we have an RN.
And we got the RN.
So one of the agencies that are staff members that approached us about a buyout, actually, she knows the building. She's taking the weekend supervisor position, which is one of the hardest ones where she knows their system, she knows the staff. So it's another RN and another nurse as well that's sorting the team through it.
Awesome. Really creative approach. Anyone else? All right, moving on to department head update. So I'm gonna just. Actually, we'll start.
During a hundred forty in-house. Yes, on ICE, I actually got an inspection. Between the February eleventh and thirteen for their initial inspection. So things are moving. Kind of quickly and moving right along. So we're jumping through some hoops there. Down that, there's a lot of personnel stuff. Unfortunately, some good, some bad. We are still getting plenty of people to apply, which is awesome. A lot of maintenance issues here and there that just Darwin's been taking care of plumbers and things like that. So we've shifted some units around. It's great. E-unit is quiet still. That takes out the fans, not blowing, so. That's great. February twenty fourth at the Caproni Center is a legislative conference. I get to emcee that, I guess. Let me like to go, it's twenty five dollars. You'll have your, your people from the federal end, the state end. And those kinds of things. Association kind of is working with them to talk about priorities and what things may land and how we can collaborate back and forth. So if anyone wants to go, sign up through the Association of County. I don't know if it's open yet. It should be open very soon to, to jump on and go. So hopefully somebody will decide to go there. And that's all I have.
Great. Alison. We're just working on some, well, one of our initiatives, the HR initiatives is to host a lunch and learn. Or a collaboration or collaborative outside of the, the staff dining hall. On wellness or our benefits. So Harlow is gonna be there on January twenty sec, twenty second. That's for any Cigna participants, anybody that's in our Cigna. It's a healthcare shopping kind of a situation. Where if you're gonna, your doctor orders an MRI or surgery, blood work, X-rays. If you contact Harlow and you go through them, they're gonna find the most financially economical one. And then based on whatever procedure or treatment you're gonna have for X-rays, MRIs or whatever. You'll then get a bonus of a check back to you for savings. That's been big. A lot of our employees that know this program have used it consistently. And then Colonial Life is our accident, critical illness and cancer. And hospitalization plan, which is a voluntary benefit and you can enroll in that at any time. It's not specific to our annual enrollment. They'll be coming onsite on the twentieth. Of February in the Hilton Auditorium to, and it's for any benefit eligible employee that would like to look at having some other kind of. Just cost containment, just in the event that something happens to them. So we're looking at that right now. And we're just getting up on board on just some other things that are going on in the office. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's nice to see you.
Yeah, I know, right. It's nice to be here, Carson. It's not nice to wear the mask, but. We're busy as usual. I don't really have much to report. You, you met the new judge, so he's gonna be full-time at our courthouse, which would be nice. It'll, it'll give us another judge. She'll be able to do that through more cases than we are right now. So it's really good. And he's just been shadowing Judge Ruoff for, for this past week. So hopefully, he seems like a good guy. Super smart. Hopefully he'll, he'll do a good job. So we're happy about that. Other than that, we're just working on.
It's a good judge, good judge to shadow. Yeah, Judge Ruoff is like, got early.
Yeah.
And especially with drug court and things like that. It's good to see someone that was asked.
Yeah, absolutely.
I've sat on some committees with him a little bit. He's a really nice guy. He seems to really care and he puts a lot of work in, so.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to working with him.
Yeah. I love the comfort dog thing, Jason. You can run and buy in my office anytime.
No, it's seriously, I feel like, and especially with moving next door, it'd be easy to like, really bring the dog around and.
And there is some stuff training so that way they also train to, if you had, you'd have victims in your.
Yeah, we, we, we have worked with other comfort dogs with other police departments. I bring them into our office sometimes when we have victims and things like that. But sometimes they just bring them in for us. Because so really, I mean, we just, you know, we deal with a lot of heavy emotional, struck, you know, awful things. And so to have a dog come in and we can just, you know.
Especially like, you know, child abuse victim, you know, cases and term, it's like, sometimes you just, or you start getting more.
Right, right, right. So I think that's awesome. So good for you for doing that. So I'll chat with you about it. I'll find.
That's it.
So our expenses in the nursing home is a hundred and thirty-three. Our assisted living is at forty-nine. We do have a transfer to the nursing home though in the next couple of days. Unfortunately, we are getting hit pretty hard with all the different bugs out there and mainly our staff right now. We have one resident that is COVID positive. The remainder have been our staff. Thankfully, some are starting to come back, but even with the ones that are turning to trickle in, we are still at six. And that does not include individuals that are out with symptoms and aren't testing positive. But there's no residents on the assisted living side, keeping on the bug, I guess, trend for updates. So we are seeing a big in, increase. Sometimes we have a small respiratory outbreak on one unit. We are starting to see neuro on a different unit. And then we have the staff in COVID and then all of those are also being seen in our residents. So we are in a mass mandate to have, mandate. To help kind of curb that and protect to kind of contain as well. On a more positive note, the new Chaplain is starting next week. So that is very exciting to kind of be able to get that up and running. Take span on the program. We have a new D O N that is starting at the end of this month. We did a meet and greet our staff earlier this week. A lot of staff came through, managers came through, different departments came through to greet her. And it went really well. So she's excited to be able to start.
It's been a long time in the, in the making, so.
I'm very excited. I think it'll be great. And she has a very strong infection control background. Which is all we needed in a nursing home. In addition to that, we have been continuing with the R fever dietary. And one of the meetings got moved to this week and we had another company reach out to bring the total to six at the end of all of it. And then I guess that's it for now. Sure, there's more, but I will end there.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna move next to Zuland. Kathy, do you want to?
Congratulations, everybody. It's gonna be a, a good couple of years. I, I feel it in my bones and. It's nothing to report over here. I just, you know, obviously we're here, we're ready to help out however we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kathy. I'm gonna skip, I mean, Katie, Casey wants to say anything, but I assume she's.
And I'll, I'll try to be brief, at least for, for the department update. So W two's emails, they go out, Lisa Long about several as far as that W two's are being mailed out by U K G. They are already available online. So if employees want to log online, they can check out the W Q's and print them out.
Well, that's great.
So yes, so that is done. However, as far as those individuals that participate in HSAs. We might have also gotten emails from Voya Financial itself to log in and print off your two different tax forms. Because one is the contributions, one is are the distributions from your HSA account. So you have to do that separately on your own. I'm not sure if they're actually going to mail them or not. This year, so just keep that in mind for those who participate in HSA health savings accounts. Let's see, grants, obviously I keep on mentioning this, but every month on quarter end is crazy with grant filing, grant reporting, all sorts of other deadlines. We're also working on ten nine nine forms, both non-employee compensation and the slangest forms, a little vendor that doesn't fall under. You know, that's still part of the reporting, but aren't non-employee compensation forms. The executive committee traveled early and told me that the official meeting date is not the twenty fourth of January, it's the thirty first. I guess Rep. Weiler, his grandson is actually becoming a Green Beret. So Rep. Mills would rather have Rep. Weiler there for the meeting. And, and I guess one thirty, one twenty-four is when Rep. Weiler would jack it down. I think it's North Carolina as far as for that ceremony. So, so one thirty-one is the effective, is the true date of birthday, is one of the fortunes of the university. And on the grant note, I did have a extremely late CDBD funding request. I'll just bring that up under the business.
Thanks.
Good morning, good afternoon. Not a lot going on. We're very busy, all's well. ESP is still down. The PLC, when it failed, there were a couple of other components that were damaged. So next week I'll be bringing forward another bidway to add a request for transfer to cover those expenses, just so you know. We received some comments back from DOT. We do have permission to work in the wetlands portion where the water main wants to go in. But they've asked us to resurvey the striping on North Road. We had asked them not to pave, they paved. And now we have to resurvey the stripes before we can put in our water line in the sidewalk work. So there's about thirty seven hundred dollars. Chuck's gonna try and help me to find it. I'll be bringing that forward to you next week as well, because that was an our project. And obviously that's done. The only other thing is, I spoke to the contractors this week. And I was hoping to invite the commissioners and department heads for kind of a sneak peek. In the building on the thirty first, maybe after the executive committee. Because I think a lot of people are starting to get very excited and maybe if you can kind of put a picture to it, the sheetrock stuff, they're deciding to paint. Commissioner Godu, I know, is waiting to bring through a few state reps, but I thought maybe the department has a commissioner should go through first. So anyone who's interested, they'll be ready to walk us through after the executive committee meeting on the thirty first. And that includes Chantel and Allison. I mean, you know, it's gonna be, it's our neighborhood now, so it would be really great if everybody was able to take a peek.
When the sheetrock goes up, that's when it feels very real. Like that is the defining point of when it feels.
Paint on the county trade.
Feel where the boundaries are.
It's awesome. Yeah, it's very exciting. So we'll be very pleased to have anyone join us that's available on that day. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Sorry?
How are the workers handling?
Oh, those guys were all out there with their bottle of clonazone yesterday. It was cold. We stood outside looking at a place where the dog kennel was gonna go. I had dirt sticking to my teeth. It was so windy. It was so cold. They seem to be managing. They have warming stations. The, the heat's not so bad really on the ground floor and the first floor. Half of Dees is pretty cold, so they've got that barrier off, but they're putting in the windows as quick as they can.
Yeah.
The guys that were putting in the windows, they were hosing them off so there would be no dirt on the windows. And when we're coming through and from the inside, you can see the warmth freezing on the window while they were hosing it. It was really cold.
It was made last year.
They seem to be managing okay. I mean, they're very responsible and safety first. So I always think in some cases the cold is not as bad as the heat.
Yeah.
So they seem to, you know.
And once you get, you know, it's a lot easier once we finish getting a little more weather tight than it's like, it's, they can heat that internal space.
Exactly, yeah. And we're watching, anyway, so we're very happy to see the windows going in, all of that. Yeah. That's all. Thank you very much.
Robin, anything?
Okay, thanks. Good afternoon, everybody. Nice to see you all. Been in a bit. I'm gonna hit twenty twenty-five. With a gusto, we have a bunch of projects that are near ending. We have some for the jail, attorney's working on something. The nursing homes, phones finally that are gonna be coming in in the next few weeks. So I think that we were just gonna have a whole bunch end at the end of the month and then some new, some new things starting up again. So I suspect it's gonna be a busy spring and then we'll be preparing for next year's budget.
It's great. We love the infrastructure. Thank you, Robin. Leila?
Yes, first of all, I just want to say congratulations. We're all three of you. Thank you, Jude and her team and Sam for getting Commissioner Tomorello's desk into his new office. No easy feat. I thank Robin for setting him up with his laptop and his phone and new county phone. And yeah, thank you to Sam again for setting up the Hilton. He did a great job. It was, it was really, really good. And I'm looking forward to the next two years, at least the next two years.
Fantastic. All right, well, on that happy note. Moving on to, we have new business, old business. There's first, we have some new business with respect to human resources. The amended effective date on a position change.
We'll make a motion to amend the position changes approved by the Board of Commissioners on November twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. And January second, two thousand and twenty-five, reflect an effective date at February ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Due to the scheduling change in the executive committee meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? This is simply pro forma with respect to the change in the date, pushing everything back a week to the executive committee.
No issue.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I'm gonna abstain because there wasn't a target.
That's fair.
But not for any other reason, just.
And I vote yes. So that's, okay. We have another, some new business. Chuck, did you say you had other new business?
Yes.
Okay.
Also known as a walk-in.
It's okay.
So I sent off a, a quick email to Leila. So Matt Cordaro, Cordaro. Who's the CEO of One Sky Community Services. They're the area agency for Rockham County. We've done many, in the past, many CDBD projects with them. And so basically, they, they work with providing services or housing for those that are physically or mentally disabled. We're at, we're at brain disorders. They've been the area agency for Rockham County since nineteen eighty-three. And again, we just, I think, completed a CDBD project in this past fiscal year with them as well. So what happened was, this kind of concurred with some bad news on the C B G. Community development block grant project side of things. Epping Meadows, which was that sixty unit affordable housing project that we had going. Community Development Block Grant Project side of things, Epping Meadows, which was that sixty-unit affordable housing project that we had going on. Unfortunately, it's closing, it's not going to come to fruition, it's because the town of Epping is having some water supply issues. They put a moratorium on a new water sewer connections and it's an indefinite end date. So unfortunately, because of that, um, Epping Meadows is not gonna happen. Because of that, they and some other housing projects that were going on are having to return uh CDVG monies to C D F A. Uh, Community Development Finance Authority with the state, the ones who administer all the funds for CDVG that the state of New Hampshire receives. And so, um, because of those additional monies and that the application window is. Closing or coming up for the first round of CDVG funds in calendar year twenty twenty-five, that deadline is January twenty-seventh. For the last Monday, um, Donna Lane, who's a consultant, who's the consultant, who runs all side for CDVG. Uh, in the state of New Hampshire, I've been talking with Matt from from One Sky. And he had a, they were buying a uh a piece of land from a nonprofit. Um, intensive thing called Carriage Farm, they do deep lines therapy, um, like Brian and Provent. And I guess that nonprofits are under some hard times, um, they're under receivership receivership right now. And so One Sky was hoping to purchase some of the land that had a building on it, that they're going to convert to being a four-bedroom house. That could serve uh some individuals that have disabilities and they would also be located close to where their other family members are in Rockham County. And so Donna Lane has already said that is a worthy fundable project. And that C D F A should be able to score high enough to actually get to the finish line and receive funding. The whole problem is, so Kensington already said no, um, One Sky already went to Kensington, because we always ask them to go to the town first. Because towns can also fly on behalf of the ultimate beneficiary. And Kensington said no, I'm I'm guessing it's because they don't meet that often as far as Select Board does to be able to, you know, have the public hearing that's always required. As far as with any application process for CDVG funds. So I'm, I'm, you know, now the total amount of funding that Matt was looking for all sources. Will be seven hundred and fifty thousand. Obviously, my, with what I know of, CDVG is five hundred, so. Um, they obviously work with banks and other places to get funding for any difference. Um, so I'd be, you know, wanting to propose, and again, I really do trust Donna, and we've worked so many times with One Sky. That we support this as far as um to the point of, of at least conditionally. Um, supporting going through the application process and scheduling a public hearing that's required. Obviously, right now, the issue is the notice period to do a public hearing and get the notice and the, you know, union leaders traditionally what we do. Um, so that we can meet the the deadline for, you know, the the notice period. Um, I think it'd be looking at probably January twenty-third. Uh, but the, what we've been doing with these public hearings for CDVGs is that we try to have them, you know, at. At the very earliest at three P M. in the afternoon to give the public an opportunity to attend instead of, you know, the normal time of eight thirty. Um, that's what we've done for like the the last few um public hearings on CDVG um applications. So I guess it's like a two-fold request as far as the approval for the board to to go through the application process. And to um post a uh a public hearing on the matter.
Do you wanna, well, do you want me to make the motion here, are you guys comfortable? I just have discussion.
We're gonna have a a public hearing in the afternoon instead of after our regular meeting, though? Well, I know you're saying that we get more people, but you know, we get none now and we'll get none at three o'clock in the afternoon either.
Well, what what in the past, again, Donna Lane's like de-consulted, so I kinda like trust her, she had actually, I think before we had. Actually had some previous public hearings that were in the morning.
Yeah.
And she kinda like, I think because she heard something from C D F A. Like you need to kinda have these more later in the day to give the public more of a a true opportunity. Yes, in the past, I think I can only recall maybe two public hearings, but there might have been someone from the public that attended.
Can we move on?
So, yeah, I was just gonna say the same thing, we'll just move on to the afternoon on that. But we can figure, but first we need a motion and I I don't mind making it if you prefer. Yeah, I I moved to support the application uh for for One Sky for CDVG. Funds to purchase fifty-three cotton road in Kensington in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars and thereafter. Uh, um, schedule a public hearing on the matter.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Does anybody have any um discuss further discussion?
But yes.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero, Cordero will be very speechy about this.
That's great.
Very pleased with it.
Okay, is there any other new business, old business?
No.
It took care a lot today, is there any, um, I don't see anybody in the public on Zoom land, but is there any other public element? All right, well, uh, meeting one, uh, for the twenty, the new.
Yeah, one thing I just wanted to bring up, nothing to do, so I I know coming with the new building, you know, Jude and I have had conversations, we're going to have. That put some people over there and I don't know where you folks stand with the budget, but I'd like to see a workshop eventually come forward. With open positions and what we really need to leave open, but I'm telling you, you know, if you look at a maintenance guy. You're talking a hundred thousand dollars an employee with insurance and so on and so on, or more. And Jude, you and I have talked, we think we're gonna need four or five to maintain a seventy-eight million dollar building. So I think we should do a workshop, because there's some positions and I know, when I first got elected way back, we looked at it, your husband was with us and we. Found some positions that were just kinda never gonna be filled, and I'm not looking at any department or anybody, I had a brief conversation with Kathy this morning. Kathy's gonna surrender one next year, I I think to be respectful to the taxpayers and not have a surplus, we need to look because we know that we're gonna have to give you five.
There's gonna be some meaningful I T needs as well, not just because of the new building, but also because of the I T climate, so we definitely need.
And I'm not looking to take any employees from anybody, you know, it takes three of us anyway, but I think we need to look and see, maybe we're never gonna fill that position.
Yeah, I mean, I think that to your point, I mean, this is gonna be a tough budget cycle, this is, I we knew it was coming, we all knew it was coming and it's coming. But I think that lends itself to one, maybe starting a little earlier and doing the workshops.
No, I I I think we should have a workshop.
Yeah.
And and I'll tell you. Part of the budget process, which is a couple of months away or.
Yeah.
In my town in Sandown, we had a surplus from the school board of eleven million dollars and they budgeted for sixty positions and didn't fill them and I brought the superintendent in. If he'd have budgeted for ten and filled five, I'm okay, but so you took the money from the taxpayers at a time that you shouldn't be taking it. And then he didn't want to give us back the money, and I said, well, then I'm not gonna pay my school bill, so I think you wanna be respectful of the taxpayers, if you know that you're not gonna give a film. Maybe we gotta look at maybe not having.
And I think the one thing I think that we've done well is maintain positions but fund them at a dollar in a number of instances, so I think that. Everybody is mindful of that, but I I don't, it doesn't change your point about.
I don't have an agenda, so I don't want anybody to go, oh, Tom, she had a cut, no, 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 I just, you know, I'm looking because I see the future, you know, the hundred and three is gonna have a baby. You know, whereas the hundred and three million is gonna have a baby and we're gonna be responsible to the taxpayers and tell them why. You know, the building is nice and it looks pretty, but guess what, we gotta maintain it, we gotta, oh, that's all, just something down the road, maybe after the weather breaks, we all get together. Take a department and look at what you got, take another department and wrap a couple after a meeting.
All part of it.
How big a baby we gonna have?
And look at the position.
I know it's gonna be more colorful. But there's no agenda, don't take that he's already. Should we move into non-public? You're gonna have to make a raise this year.
I'll make a motion for a non-public under Iris Hill, Iris A ninety-one, they're four, three, one, two. A personnel, are they all personnel?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion?
No.
Uh, take a Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, everybody, uh, do you wanna start with, why don't we start?
It's the recording for the non-public.
All right, hello, everybody, we've uh exited non-public and we have a couple of motions to make and, um, you know, I don't wanna relinquish all my. Work duties have passed, so I'm going to make some motions, so uh we have five non-public sessions, they were all personnel matters with no end date. And so I moved to steal all those minutes indefinitely because they could adversely affect the reputation. Other than a member of this board with no end date to the resolution, and so I moved to see those indefinitely. Yeah, well, it's great, okay, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, and then we had tabled some motions that we're gonna bring forward right now and I, um, the first move, motion I make is. I move to approve a repurpose, regrade and revise job description for one senior office administrator to one business service manager. Effective February ninth, twenty twenty-five, pending approval by the executive committee as recommended by the superintendent and senior director of human resources. Okay, any discussion? On that motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello, yeah, and I vote yes. Further, I move to approve an exception request to Personnel Policy seven dash four for Department of Corrections employee K A. For the period beginning December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four through February eighth, twenty twenty-five, as recommended by the superintendent and senior director of human resources.
Second.
On that, any more discussion? Okay, um, on that motion, uh, Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. And so, um, with that, I think that concludes business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Um, all of us in favor? All right, we're three zero, we are adjourned.
No, I like it, you know, and it's good.